2024. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor Andrew Wilson, pastor of Revival Culture Southeast Texas. If everyone would please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, City Council members. Father, we thank you. We are in your presence only by the blood of Jesus. And we thank you because this season that we are in, you are the reason, Lord. And we turn to you once again to give you thanks. Father, we are here today to do matters, but recognizing that the courts, that is above every other position, is the one that you have given us access to, again by the blood of Jesus and even the name. And we thank you for that. We're so thankful because it is you who have brought us to this point, God. Every good and perfect gift comes from above, God. It's from you, this life that we have, Lord. It's all from you, Lord. Father, I just want to speak a blessing over this city, declaring that God, it belongs to you, Lord. That, God, we are yours. Dedicating, God, our work, our lives, our time, our will and our emotions, everything, God. We declare that it is yours. We submit these things to you according to your will. May they be done according to your will, God. That's what our prayer is, God. Not that a man's will would be done today, but, God, that your will would be done. God, I pray for a holy conviction to rest upon our hearts and minds, especially now in this season, Lord, that we are not turned by what pleases man, God. For, Lord, these things sadden your heart when we are more concerned about a man than we are concerned about the things of you, Lord. Forgive us, God, when we come to do our will before we are concerned about doing your will, God. That's my prayer. That's our prayer today, God, that your kingdom would come, that your will would be done here on earth as it already is taking place in heaven, Lord. And everyone who agreed would say in Jesus's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Under God. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Neal.
Present.
Councilmember Durio.
Here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
And Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
All right, I'd like to take a moment of silence for former Mayor Evelyn Lord. She, today, was the funeral. I had the privilege to get to go there earlier. She passed away on the 13th. She served on council and then she served four terms as mayor with a break in the middle of two and three and presented a resolution to her family at that time. We'll just take one moment. Okay, today we have one presentation from the City of Beaumont Communication Department.
Good afternoon. In this week's announcements, the City of Beaumont kicked off its Clean Blitz Project last week, starting first in the Charleston Pollard neighborhood. This is a unified effort by the city to go into individual neighborhoods and make an impact. From checking smoke detectors and water leaks to cutting grass and clearing debris from storm drains, we're hoping to make a difference one neighborhood at a time. Attention all Ballers, registration is now open for the City of Beaumont's Youth Basketball League. Teams and players can register through January 3rd at the Sterling Pruitt Activity Center on Gulf Street. You can also download the registration form and get the contact information on the City of Beaumont's Facebook page. The Beaumont Fire Department will hold its traditional push-in ceremony as we place our newest fire engine into service at Station 6. It will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, December 18th, at 10:00 a.m. at Fire Rescue Station 6 on South Major Drive. You can help make the holidays a little bit brighter for a shelter pet. You can adopt, foster, or even just take a dog out for the day. Beaumont Animal Care is offering reduced adoption rates of just $20 during their Home for the Holidays adoption event. And the need right now is actually greater than ever with over 80 dogs in the shelter and 11 on our urgent list in desperate need of homes. You can visit our shelter at 1884 Pine Street in Beaumont Tuesday through Friday, 10 to 5, and Saturday from 10 to 4. With the holidays upon us, there are a few changes to city services I want to mention. City offices will be closed on Christmas Day, Wednesday, December 25th. And on Wednesday, January 1st, our solid waste department will also be closed, so there will be no garbage collection. And Beaumont Zip will not operate on December 25th or January 1st, so our employees can enjoy the holidays with their families. The City of Beaumont, together with Temple Emmanuel, is excited to invite the community to a special menorah lighting celebrating the spirit of unity and the rich diversity that defines our city. The ceremony will take place in front of City Hall in downtown Beaumont, and we invite the entire community to join us December 30th at 5:00 p.m. And finally, as the mayor mentioned, we would like to recognize the passing of our former Beaumont mayor, Evelyn Lord, who was laid to rest earlier this morning. She passed away at her home this past Friday at the age of 98. In 1990, Mayor Lord was a trailblazer, becoming the first woman to ever be elected mayor of Beaumont. Her popularity got her reelected to the position in 1992, 2000, and 2002. The City of Beaumont is grateful for the years of service and leadership Mayor Lord provided to our community, and we send our heartfelt condolences to her family and loved ones. And that's all for this week's announcements.
Thank you, ma'am. At the close of the meeting today, City Council will recess into executive session to consider matters related to contemplated or pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code. The claim of Aaron Reynolds Jr. on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the government body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the state bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter in accordance with Section 551.071 of the Government Code. And then, opinion of the city attorney regarding compensation. Now, we're going to move into public comments, and now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda, regular agenda items 1 through 12, or any other topics. Items 13 through 15 have already been heard in public hearing. Therefore, citizens cannot speak on those items. Item 16 will be heard during the public hearing. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. When you approach the podium, please say your address, city and state. You will have three minutes for comments. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And please be reminded that myself, nor council, can respond whenever you're making comments, but someone from the office will contact you.
Jerome Alexander, 1118 Avalon Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. How everybody doing, council members? I'm here today on behalf of me, Ms. Ruth Jones, and our 503 nonprofit organization, Homes Progression Humanities Hope. And I come today to ask the council members, can y'all some way put in y'all agenda for warming stations, some type of where they can have warming stations coming up this year? Because it's fit to get real cold. And I know last time, the summertime, y'all had a problem, you know, getting for the cooling system, for them to be cool. So I'm just coming up and asking any way y'all can put somewhere, try to find somewhere to stay warm. Appreciate it. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Thank you, sir.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, City Council, directors, other citizens, concerned citizens. I came before council to address a issue before, but I'm back to you again to address the same issue, cats. Either y'all going to establish something to curtail the cat population or do something with the cats roaming in this neighborhood. Personally, at this time, I've had to put work around my house to stop the cats and other stray dog going under my house. Now, my plan is to bring y'all the bill for putting that there because you need to do something pertaining to the cats. Now, I don't know how this is going to be cleared up, whatever, but I think it's y'all bill, not mine's. Because I'm tired of cats fighting under my house, being all kind of noise to disturb my sleep. I'm tired of that. So I had to do something. So I'm taking another step. And then, you know, beforehand, the step I'm finna take. Also, there is some issue pertaining to water leaks in this area. Now, I talked with German that's supposed to try to correct this problem, and he says he's going to correct it. But that's one issue has had a leak for over a month. Matter of fact, since October, and it has not been corrected as of yet. And that leak is at 1125 Ewing Street and 1140 Ewing Street, across the street. And both person bills are in neighborhood over $400. So that problem needs to be corrected. If the problem is on the middle side of the residents, it surely needs to be corrected to bring their water bill down. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, and city manager and staff. It's a nice day to be here in Beaumont, our town. My name is Charlie Crabbe. I live at 928 East Drive. Yeah, I want to recognize the death of Mayor Evelyn Lord. Besides being mayor for several terms, she contributed quite a bit of her time to youth and other citizens of Beaumont. She has a real interesting obituary at Broussard's. I had the... I was employed at Dupont Beaumont Works where her husband was the plant manager, Sam Lord. Well, people are preparing for the Christmas holidays. The city is lighted in colorful lights everywhere you look. There's a very thoughtful Christmas song that goes like this. Why can't every day be just like Christmas? Why can't this feeling go on and on? Why can't every day be just like Christmas? What a wonderful world this would be. That was recorded by Elvis Presley. The year is winding down thanks to all the councilmen and city employees for their service. I see we're losing two of our staff members. I want to wish them well, and I hope there are individuals trained to take their place. There was an incidence of pit bulls that were running loose in the neighborhood. And that is just a tragedy. And that seemed to occur of people injuring besides being killed by pit bulls. It seems the Israelis are in control in the Middle East. The U.S. and EU must continue to assist Israel with money and armament. Ukrainians are still keeping Putin and Russia from running over their country. Merry Christmas to everyone and to everyone have a nice week, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir.
Sheridan Jefferson, 4785 Lufkin Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon. My name is Sheridan Jefferson, and I live at 4785 Lufkin Street along with my husband, Isaac. I stand on behalf of all citizens here in Beaumont who are having sewage and water drainage. Why? Because my husband and I have been fighting this battle for a long time. We did, on my last visit here, Mr. Mike Harris and Pastor Carlton Sharp did speak with me after I spoke with the council and informed me that they were going to do all that they can to help alleviate the problems that my husband and I have been having at that house. True enough, Mr. Mike Harris did come along with his workers, and they installed a check valve, which we're hoping to somehow help that problem. But as I informed Mr. Mike Harris, that this only happens when there is an excessive amount of rain. If it rains and stops, that gives the water a chance to go into the ground. And so, we may not can flush, but we won't have the backup. The backup sewage coming into my house is when there's a heavy load of downpour continuously over and over. Now, Mr. Terry Roy, who's also an advocate, called, and he is concerned about my problem along with other people who have been concerned. But as I told them, it's just not about me. It's about the other people too, who are going through the same problem. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carlton Sharp, 5150 Plant Road, Beaumont, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council, staff. I'm standing here today to express my support for the current administration and to highlight the progress our city has made under this leadership. While they may not always get everything right and have made some mistakes along the way, it's undeniable that we are moving forward. Now, under this administration, for the first time in my lifetime, I've seen that this administration has presented a strategic plan to provide a clear direction for our city. It's a roadmap, and it has accountability in it. I've also seen with the documents that you guys receive and also it's online that our fund balance now exceeds the charter requirements. I believe it's like 5% over what the charter requires. In the next several weeks, Riverfront Park will be opening since the hurricane in 2017. Another thing that I've seen is that we have leveraged technology with the Real-Time Crime Center. It has opened, which gives our police officers an opportunity to be equipped with the tools that they need to be successful in fighting crime in our city. For the... Well, not the first time, but now you guys have implemented the TERS, which will help implement and support the needed revitalization of downtown. While all these things that strides we are making, I would love to see more progress in the area of our infrastructure, our roads, our water, our sewer systems. However, I recognize that these improvements will not happen overnight. It takes careful planning, financial resources, and time to address these longstanding challenges effectively. Despite these achievements, the hot topic of today has been a concern over the administration's salary adjustments. So I ask this question to the council. Are only certain city employees deserving of a cost of living increase? Or are we deciding that some contributions are worth more than others? That's my question for each and every one of you. And I believe that it is inconsistent to recognize the value of one group of employees while criticizing fair adjustments for others whose results have clearly benefited the entire community. I urge you to support... To continue to support the progress and fairness by recognizing this administration's invaluable contributions. Now is the time for us to focus on unity, stability, and the long-term success of our city. So I want to thank you in advance for your time and your thoughtful consideration in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Reverend Aaron Reynolds Jr., 6945 Salida Lane, Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor, City Council, I provided the city attorney with additional information and an explanation of a June 20, 2023 audio recording. And I'm thankful that she responded on this morning. In my observation, it is very evident that truth is not a priority. The fire marshal executed tortuous interference with my contract with a plumber. The plumber was paid $100,000 for services that were not rendered. The fire marshal provided a letter that included false statements to John Rock that was given to the State Board of Plumbing when grievances were filed against him. It's included in the claim that you have. The fire marshal interacted with the plumber and bondsman to execute a stop-work order. The fire marshal attempted to coerce my signing a contract with two general contractors sent by the bondsmen. His words were, "attempted to motivate me to complete my project." It's noted in the letter that was written to John Rock that I refused to sign. When I did not sign the contract and told the bondman that this is his responsibility to sign the contract and pay for the construction, the fire marshal refused then to allow me to protect my investments. The fire marshal committed defamation with his email that is recorded in the City of Beaumont records and is accessible to the public. The fire marshal also committed defamation with his letter to John Rock with false statements, and it is on record with the State Plumbing Board and is accessible to the public. The fire marshal is responsible for my lost revenue. Because of the actions of the fire marshal, it created mental anguish and stress that contributed to my having a heart attack on August 3rd, 2023. If it becomes necessary for me to file a lawsuit, the City of Beaumont becomes responsible for damages and punitive damages. The evidence indicated by the emails with bow hands and comments and recorded audios by myself and by the fire marshal with his actions demonstrates my being denied my rights. The audio recording on March 7th, 2024 reflects that. And then, on another note, city manager, you're doing a great job. We support you.
Thank you.
Vernon Durden, 11436 West Ferry, Beaumont, Texas.
Good morning, or good afternoon to the city council, the mayor, city manager. I was hoping I would follow up with Mr. Crabbe. He always comes up with a lot of good information and brings us up to state of the union of the state of Beaumont, Texas. I mainly came to just wish everybody happy holidays. You all have worked long and hard. You deserve a break. It's the holiday season coming up. And I have a special message for the executive staff who probably know that they are not liked or appreciated very much. And I know there's a lot of noise out there. But ignore the noise. They used to tell us in school, empty wagons make a lot of noise. Ignore the noise. Your hours of support, keep doing a good job, and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. And public comments is closed at this point. Is there a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda?
A motion for approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. On H, can we explain what is being amended on this?
Yes, sir. I believe Christina Lowkey is here with Economic Development, but I'll...
It's just the deadline. And as she's walking, it's just a timeline in which they receive the zone. There was a calculation of the date from when it was adopted. But if you want greater detail, I'll let Christina do it. But the only thing that's being amended is the timeline for the repayment zones.
Thank you.
Did you have any other further questions?
No, ma'am, that answers it.
Wait, I did. Christina, so how do you calculate the dates? And what was done and what is being done?
Absolutely. So what's really interesting is that it's based off of the investment. So for the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, it's depending on the amount of the investment on whether you get anywhere from three to seven years of tax abatements. Now, in the agreement, we include the base year because the base year actually identifies the amount calculated for the previous tax abatements in the ongoing years. Now, in this Section 9, that base year should not have been included, which is why we're taking the base year out. And it was just simply a clerical error. But what's really interesting is that each one of the applicants, it's completely identified how many years those tax abatements were. So this one section just included that base year as well.
Thank you.
So for document construction, the fix wouldn't have implemented the changing of the document we executed. We're just... And all the parties agree that it would just be for clarity and for understanding for the record. But the actual contract document is clear on what the years are and what was totaled.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilman Durio.
Yeah, on item G, could somebody tell me is this something that we've already received? Or is this something that we just registered, signed up for? Or explain that to me?
It's something we're applying for. We meet the deadline to apply for the Homeland Security Assistance and Firefighters Grant Program. It's actually going to allow us to purchase the Stryker stretchers and additional AEDs to function over a two-year cycle.
Have you all received this before?
We have not.
All right, thank you, chief.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you please take us into the reading of item number one, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel to consider resolution correcting wording in Resolution 24-311. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
I make a motion that we table this until we have had a chance to consider this in executive session as already scheduled for today.
Mayor, I agree with that. Unless we can go up and is this time... Is there a time constraint on approving this? Because my question is, is that there is discussion that needs to take place in executive session prior to voting on this, I think.
There's no time limit.
Thank you.
All right. Was that a second to the tabling?
I don't know. Was you requested to table it? Or was it...
To table it until after we've had a chance to discuss this in executive session.
All right, I agree with that. So for clarity, are we going to move up now and discuss it? Or are we going to wait till we go into executive session at the end?
Let's... We'll have a motion on the tabling until after the discussion. I'm going to move for a vote there if there's any discussion, and then we'll make that decision. All right. All those in favor of tabling this until we've met on it in executive session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right.
You're at the table, yes. I'm sorry. But for clarity, we're tabling this, and we're actually discussing this today.
Right. We can... Yes, we'll go upstairs. We'll recess to executive session and discuss that one item right now.
Okay, I support that.
Okay. And myself as well. All right. With that, the motion carries.
For clarity, we won't be discussing specifically this item. We'll be discussing the legal opinion on compensation, which could include this item because that's what's posted.
All right. Well, with that, we're going to recess into executive session, and we'll be back down to continue the agenda after that. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, we have roll call.
Mayor West.
President.
Mayor Protim Neal.
President.
Councilmember Duryo.
Here.
Councilmember Gitz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
All right, Mr. City Manager, we're going to go back and do the reading of item number one, please.
Counsel to consider resolution correcting wording in Resolution 24-311. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number one?
I saw a move for approval.
Is there?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number one. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz.
A few weeks ago, this council took up for consideration the matter of compensation of the executive staff. By a four-three vote, certain compensation was approved. The matter that's before us today is not to change the effect of that vote. This that we're being considered, that we're considering right now, does not change that at all. What it does do is clean up and clarify some language that explains better what the result of that vote was. So in other words, I'm not changing my vote on the compensation that I made a few weeks ago. But I will vote in favor of clarifying the language with this resolution.
Any other discussion? Councilman Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with with Councilmember Getz's comments, but to clarify that, does this need to be an addendum to the existing or the original resolution?
So when we amend resolution, this becomes resolution. The original resolution stands. This will just be an A. So it actually becomes an attachment to that resolution. So there, if someone was to search it, they would see both resolutions along with the correction.
Councilman Turner?
Just, I want to state for the record, on October 25th, 2022, we had a seven-o vote, including councilmembers on this council, and the language was the same and was approved on October 1. And October 10th, 2023, the language was the same as well, and it was a six-one vote, and it was effective October 1. What I would recommend is in the future, we do evaluations prior to October 1.
Councilman Durio.
I just wanted to add, the compensation for the manager was a 2% raise, and we added additional monies to his 457 retirement plan. He did not get a $30,000 raise. Prior to what's, I mean, contrary to what's being said on social media, that is exactly what happened. 2% raise and money was added to his 457.
So just to clarify, no one received a raise. Everyone received a cost of living increase, which is a term of art. Raises and cost of living increases are two different things. Raises are based on merit. Cost of living is just something that's calculated by finance to be adjusted for inflation, the increase in insurance costs and so forth. So no one received a raise.
Councilman Getz.
Madam Attorney, on this, I'm going to have to push back and disagree some. There is a big difference between someone that is getting a 2% bump that is in a six-figure salary compensation package versus someone that is a sanitation truck driver making $50,000 a year or so. That, that is, you know, light years apart. So call it a cost of living allowance, if you like. But 2% on top of $250,000 or $262,500, that's a significant difference in number of dollars.
I don't disagree. However, I was just pointing out that what was budgeted for was a 2% cost of living increase for all full-time employees, and that was what was given to executive staff. The executive staff, by resolution, did not receive a raise.
Call for the question.
Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilman Phil Shaw.
And again, just for clarity, so the public will understand my position. My vote for the compensation package has not changed. But as Councilman Getz said, I do support cleaning up this language for the purpose of clarity, and I commend our legal department for taking action and, and bringing this to our attention and clarifying this and cleaning this up. Thank you, Mayor.
And Mayor, and I just want to add on, again, for the city attorney, thank you. You, you did what you're hired to do, and you did a great job. I appreciate that.
All right, all in favor of approving item one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number two?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel consider resolution accepting maintenance of the street, storm sewer, water and sanitary sewer improvements in Windermere subdivision, section five. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number two?
You read item number one, I think, or two.
I read, I read three. I read three. I'm sorry, Mayor. Let me go back to two.
You sure did.
Got too many pages there. Let's go back to two.
So now we'll do item number two. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. The Beaumont Convention and Visitors Bureau is seeking authorization to apply for the terrorism-friendly Texas program through the office of the governor during the terrorism-friendly designation for the city, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Right now, is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Durio, then Councilman Getz. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, now may we have the reading of item number three.
Now, number three. Counsel consider resolution accepting maintenance of the street, storm sewer, water and sanitary sewer improvements in Windermere subdivision, section five. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number three?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number four?
Counsel consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute related documents to acquire property located at 1599 Pine and 727 through 735 Catalpa Street. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number four?
Saw a move for approval.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number four. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number five, please?
Counsel consider resolution authorizing the city manager to water contract to Bryce Star Contracting, Inc., Inc. of Beaumont for the Cattail Marsh Levy Emergency Repair Project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number five. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio.
Yeah, this, uh, emergency repairs, is there a damage, um, is, is it a leak out there or something?
I'm going to yield to Mike Harris, who's over the sewer plant.
So actually, Councilman Durio, it's not a leak. It's actually one of the levees in between cell one and Hillibrant Bio. The levee has actually slipped and failed, fell. And we're trying to get it repaired before it does slip all the way out and allow the treated wastewater to leak over in Hillibrant Bio.
Oh, it's not currently leaking into the.
Not currently leaking, no. We're trying to catch it before it does.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. All in favor of approving item number five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number six?
Counsel consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number 11 to the contract with IOCO LLC of Beaumont for the Colliers Ferry Pump Station project. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number six?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for approval?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number six. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz and then Councilman Phil Shaw.
Bart, can you tell us why we're having to do this change order? What things have happened to necessitate these changes?
Yes, sir. I'm going to hand out a summary of the change orders for this project as it's rather large and, you know, it's more complex than other projects. And I'll give you a summary while that's going around. The project was originally awarded for $25,882,59 in April, on April 26, 2022. The contract started June 27, 2022, and we're currently scheduled for completion in July 24, 2025. It's important to note on this project that FEMA is paying 90% of the project. TIDOM, or Texas Department of Emergency Management, is paying 7.5% of the project. The city's paying 2.5% of the project. So this is a, the paper that's going around right now gives you a concise summary of the 11 change orders that have taken place. What's within their scope, the monetary amount, and whether the days have changed on it. So there's 11 change orders, including this one, that total $1,493,125.36, or 5.95% of the contract award. One thing that's very important to note on this is the largest amount of change order was in change order number four, which was $1,319,944. So of all the change orders we put through, change order number four was almost 89%, 88.4% of the total amount. The reason why that's important to note is if you look at change order number four, we moved a portion of the 48-inch raw water pipeline from its project into this Colliers Ferry Pump Station project. So that was done primarily to allow for better coordination of the pipe construction along with alignment of the new access road to the pump station. But also important to the city is that this project is fully funded by FEMA, and the raw water pipeline had a significant funding gap on it. So by moving that 1.3 million, we've moved that money into FEMA funding on this project, which is a significant financial benefit to the city. The current change order, change order number 11, reduces the contract amount by $77,297.10. And the primary reason this is a reduction overall, despite there being a number of items for this change order, is that we have changed the road structure specifications for this section to match the rest of Pine Street. So they, the specifications were too complex. They were basically building the text dot highway rather than a residential road. And so with those reductions in cost out of there, even adding the tree removal, the additional drainage of the three-by-two box culvert and the four-inch raw water line, the flange spacer, we're still $77,000 under. So I think it's important to note that it is a complex project. This goes over a number of years with a large amount of money. But it's being very well managed, and we have a very small percentage overall that we're dealing with here.
Thank you.
Councilman Phil Shaw, do you have a question? All right. With that, all those in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number seven?
Counsel consider resolution authorizing the city manager to execute change order number eight, accept maintenance and authorize final payment to ProPipe, Inc. of Irvine, California for the sewer evaluation work order contract phase four, and it comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number seven?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number eight?
Counsel consider a resolution, resolution, excuse me, authorizing an agreement to apply for available federal tax credits for the municipal transit use of CNG fuel. And it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number eight?
Move to approve. Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number eight. Is there any discussion? Councilman Phil Shaw?
City Manager, I'm, I'm just curious. I'm assuming something like this can be a little convoluted. I know this company will get 25% of any rebate that we get. This is, I'm assuming this is something that we can't do in-house to save that 25%.
Timmy, go ahead.
As far as in-house, I'll have to yield to finance, but they approached us with this. It's a program, essentially, alternative fuel excise tax credit. They approached us with this, and they extended the program from 2021 to 2024. So we're trying to get the credits for 2021 and submit those by December 31st. In order to, to do those, we, we've looked into contracting with them. But as far as finance, being able to file, I would have to yield to them.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving item number eight, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number nine?
Counsel consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute related documents to acquire property known as Steve Drive, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for item number nine?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number nine. Is there any discussion? Councilman Turner?
Mr. Brock Kovyette, can you kind of explain like the, the reasoning why and the benefit behind this project?
So Steve Street is a small street off of Pine that's been a source of citizen complaints for many years. But unfortunately, we've never been able to do anything about it because it's a privately owned street. And what we thought was because of the number of properties along that street that it was subdivided into a whole bunch of little pieces that the city would have to obtain. Looking further into it, we were able to discern that the entirety of the street was actually, it's a separate parcel that was owned by a brother and sister. So we were able to then negotiate with them and obtain the agreement that we could acquire that property from them. But garbage trucks navigate this street. It's in terrible repair. We can't legally go in and do anything to it. So by, after we acquire it, we intend to use internal resources with streets and drainage and pave it with our heavy materials budget, and then that'll fix the problem of the navigation of those garbage trucks down the street. And I think Councilman Samuel can probably speak to this. This is probably extended over a decade worth of time that we've struggled with this particular issue.
Thank you.
Councilman Getz?
So help me understand, are we saying that when there's some privately owned streets out there that are in poor shape, the city is prepared to purchase those streets and then use taxpayer resources to fund them and bring them up to standards? Is that what we're doing now?
We're, we're proposing that we, we acquire the property just because of the difficulty we've had with it over the years. I know we've expressed, we've addressed different spots in the city in different ways, but we do own the water and sewer through this area. We're responsible for the drainage in this area. In this, in this particular case, it is only the street that had remained private due to the way this thing was laid out years ago. due to the way this thing was laid out years ago.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approval of item number nine, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 10?
Council consider granting a new solid waste transportation service agreement with Superior Waste Solutions and recommendation of approval of the artness. It's actually an artness.
Is there a motion for item number 10?
A second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 10. Is there any discussion? Yes, Councilman Durya?
So I noticed, I guess, the next, the next few ordinances or items are about the same, the next four. Somebody explain what these actually are?
Yes, so these are for sanitation companies that are collecting garbage and things in the city of Beaumont, and they have to pay a percentage of the revenue to the city for using our landfills and things like that. So.
So these are like for private companies that don't get trash pickup from the city?
Yes, sir.
Like picking up dumpsters and stuff like that?
Yes, like Waste Management, BFL Republic, those type of organizations.
All right.
But it's also for like subdivisions that have private trash collection. There's a couple behind Westbrook that just have their own private trash collection, and those individuals have to dump at the city landfill, and they're required to have a franchise agreement.
All right.
So they're large, large-scale companies like Republic and Waste Management, and then smaller companies that just do it privately for private subdivisions.
And they, I guess they pay 7% of their gross receipts is paid to the city?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
If there's no other discussion, all those in favor of approving item number 10, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 11?
Council consider granting a new solid waste transportation service agreement with Hotchkiss Disposal Services Limited, and recommendation approval of the artness.
Is there a motion for item number 11?
Move to approve.
There's, there is a second. There's a motion and a second for approval of item number 11. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 11, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 12?
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider granting a new solid waste transportation service agreement with GFL Plant Services LP, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the artness.
Is there a motion for item number 12?
Some move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 12, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 13?
Council consider an artness to amend sections 28.03.023 and 28.04.008 of the city of Beaumont's Code of Artnesses, and it comes with the recommendation of approval of the artness.
Is there a motion for item number 13?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 13. Is there any discussion? Councilman Getz?
So one of the things that I would like to inquire about with regard to uses of businesses in the Central Business District, and Councilman Turner and I have talked about this before. We have from time to time people that come up and want to create a venue which could have loud music, that could negatively impact residences. In the Central Business District, I think we already have an entertainment district within the Central Business District. Can we clarify that the noise requirements do not apply to businesses in the Central Business District? Or how does that work?
I would need to research it a little bit to make sure. But as I know of it, the, it's, the rules or the noise ordinances still apply. But I would need to research that, and I can definitely get back to you guys on that. As far as establishing entertainment districts within the city, I think a good route to do that is through our comprehensive plan process. And right now, we're working with the GLO to hopefully be awarded a grant so that we can take on that process. But I do think that entertainment districts are a very good idea, and we need to look at those closely.
I think, I agree with you, and I think it would be helpful to go ahead and try to get these designated as soon as possible so that we don't continue to run into these problems with entrepreneurs, people wanting to come out and develop something, you know, for nightlife and to offer places for people to go and enjoy themselves without having to worry about whether they will be offending their neighbors with loud music and noise. So let's, let's try to proceed if we can on that.
Councilman Turner?
Yes, we, we've kind of been talking about this for a few weeks, and I actually sent the follow-up email on yesterday because I've seen it successful in other cities where you don't want our entrepreneurs who are invested into the community with their tax dollars, their sales tax, feuding with, you know, the property owners who are investing with property tax. So I think if we can kind of look at a way to, you know, maybe expedite or identify the areas that already have these, you know, venues, and we can really create this entertainment district because I'm seeing a consistent trend and a problem where neighborhood bars are not good for neighborhoods. And I want to make sure we're fair to the investors as well as the neighbors. So I think this is a great way that we can get ahead of this.
Yes, sir.
There's no other discussion. All those in favor of approving item number 13, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 14?
Council consider request for, for a specific use permit to allow duplex and, and RS residential, single-family dwelling district for property located at 6795 Highway 105. In a joint public hearing on November 25, 2024, the planning commission recommend, recommended 600 to approve with the following conditions. One, construction plans must meet all requirements by water utilities for water and sanitary sewer services, including any requirements of the city's backflow, pre-treatment, and our fall program. And two, construction plans should comply with all applicable fire and building code requirements.
Is there a motion for item number 14?
To approve with the conditions?
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 14, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. May we have the reading of item number 15, please?
Council consider request to amend the conveyance and dedication of private streets and infrastructure to the city of Beaumont, and it was approved in a joint public hearing with the planning commission with the following condition. A plat produced by licensed, licensed surveyor must be submitted to the planning office prior to final acceptance of the streets and infrastructure.
Is there a motion for item number 15?
Move to approve.
Second.
There is a motion and a second for approval of item number 15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of approving item number 15, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. City Manager, would you please take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Council to conduct a public hearing on the finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that a public health nuisance is exist on the property at McFadden HCS LTS 11-13 TR2, LTS 14 and 15 TR1 B27 for the property owned by 606 Harold LLC.
All right. The public hearing is now open, and I think we're going to have a presentation by our Public Health Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Again, this is one of the properties that was brought before you last council meeting, and we had to recall it because it wasn't posted correctly, so we bring them back to you again. We've been in touch with the property owner since then. He has promised to clean up the property, but as you can see in the pictures, he has not made any attempt to clean up the property. So we bring them back before you this day.
Is there anybody here also to speak?
I don't have anyone, Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will, unless anybody has any questions? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. City Manager, may we have the reading of item number 16?
Council to consider finding and ratifying the determination of the Public Health Director that public health nuisances exist on the property at McFadden HCS LTS 11 through 13 TR2, LTS 14 and 15, GR1 B27. Comes with the recommendation of approval.
Is there a motion for item number 16?
Move to approve.
Is there a second for their approval?
Second.
Any discussion on item number 16? All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion is carried. Mr. City Manager, would you take us into the work session?
Revere discuss the downtown proactive code enforcement update. We have Mr. Bo Henson here to speak with us.
Good afternoon, Council, staff. Good to be with you. Thank you for your time today. As always, I will try to be as concise as possible. Today's downtown update will be presented a bit different than previous updates I've given to you guys. I still have all the addresses for you to see individually where they stand, but our interactions with property owners and the data has begun to tell a compelling story that we want to share with you today. Next slide, please. So this slide has nine different owners represented. That is nine of the 14 total, and each of them we have had great ongoing conversations with. And that's the story for everyone who we've had at least two or more meetings with. That's not to say they are, they haven't experienced any frustrations, but it is to say that we feel like we have a great working relationship with these property owners, and they are communicating well with us in return through this process. And honestly, I want to take a moment just to publicly thank them for working so well with us through this proactive enforcement that we've been doing and working together as a team to make downtown as safe as possible. I'm going to circle back to the vacant building registry. But first, you'll notice no charges are being filed on any of these owners, which would be indicated by a yellow bullet point. Some are in full compliance, some are in temporary compliance, which means they are temporarily boarded and secured, and some are in partial compliance. But these owners are making progress, and again, more importantly, communicating well throughout the process. You may be wondering why 75 and 50%. Well, assuming 50% is the mark between a clear plan and actual repairs being done. The four properties at 50% have a real plan. As I'm sure you know, those are two different owners who both continue to sit down with us with real plans drawn by a design professional. Because of that, we believe that they plan to occupy these buildings as soon as possible. The ones marked at 75% are mostly compliant. They just lack one or two small items being repaired. And again, we are in regular, regular communication with those owners as well. And so for our code violations, we are not currently pursuing compliance through the court with these owners. Now separately, I mentioned the vacant building registry. And as each of you know, the goal of this ordinance is not just safe buildings, but occupied buildings. And occupied buildings will demand safe buildings. So there are a few on this list that may be compliant with the violations that we originally tagged the building for, which are unsafe violations, but they are not in compliance with the new, newly adopted vacant, vacant building ordinance. Or they may have a good plan for occupancy, but for whatever reason, they have not pulled permits and acted on that plan, which places them again in violation of our adopted ordinance. I'll note, our staff has not only, our, our staff has not completed addressing all vacant buildings, but we are working as quickly as possible to do so. Next slide, please. This slide is altogether different. It is a list of all the properties that have either failed to correct the unsafe violations or we've only had one meeting with the owner. More on that in just a moment. But ironically, the one building that is in full compliance on this chart is one of the ones that has only had one meeting with us, that's 750 Pearl. But in this chart, we have 15 different buildings, but only five different owners are represented here. And as indicated by the key, you will see how we are pursuing compliance with each of them. Four of the five have either not made repairs, or they have not met with us asking for more time. So as a result, we have filed charges on eight different buildings. And then keep in mind, separate from this, nine are in violation of the vacant building ordinance, and we have sent letters to, of notice to them. And then on top of that, there is normal code enforcement still going on, continuing throughout downtown, and letters of violation for general blight issues such as weeds, debris, and other things like that. But just to overly clarify this, we now have three different things happening at once. Next slide, please. Life safety, life safety in these buildings is our only concern. We are pushing for occupancy because we want safety. On the screen, you see a picture of the Gilbert Building from this past summer. We are now six months after the fire and less than 30 days away from the agreed-upon completion date for structural repairs to be, to be completed. Despite this, no building permit for repairs or restoration has been applied for. The owner has let us know that his engineer is out of the country, and they will be asking for more, asking to move their agreed-upon January 2025 deadline to sometime in the future. But as of now, staff does not know what that requested new deadline might be. Regardless, a hearing will be scheduled for early January 2025 to discuss the missed deadline. I believe it's also important to note that those repairs will only get us back to what we originally tagged, which is an unsecure vacant building. We have seen no plan for any true renovation of this building, but we will continue to press for it. Next slide, please. The good news is that the majority of the 14 owners have sat down with us and had fruitful conversations about how they can move forward. And just to remind you of why this initiative began almost a year ago. Our target was unsafe structures, which provides a clear definition for us to address life safety requirements within our adopted building codes. Secondly, we've worked with the owners to clarify what bringing an existing building up to code means. Our adopted existing building code provides remarkable flexibility for the necessary repairs being made by these owners. So with that, and just to point out the link between them, item 13 on today's agenda was a continuation of this effort, amending the permitted use table to create more turnkey businesses downtown. And lastly, and you'll see this in the last slide, which I'm about to get to, those, those that have communicated with us have typically stepped quickly into compliance and stayed out of the filing process. We will always offer extensions where we see progress being made. And I've sat down with, and I've even sat down with municipal court recently to ensure that we are only filing charges on the properties that demonstrate an unwillingness to make the repairs that are necessary. My staff has and will continue to communicate clear expectations to each and every property owner that we work with. So one more slide that I think will demonstrate all this very well. Next slide, please. So this chart shows 13 of the 14 owners in total, categorized by how well communication has gone. So there's only one property seen at the top that we are still having trouble identifying the owner. And so that building is obviously not in compliant. Then you have three owners that have had one meeting with us. And of those three, only one of those buildings is fully compliant. But nine of the 13 owners are communicating regularly with us, and as you can see, are nearly 100% compliant as a group. That's what we want to highlight. We still have a lot of work to do. We don't want to pretend like we don't. But we are going to work, continue to walk alongside these owners to help make downtown somewhere we all want to spend. somewhere we all want to spend time. But the majority of these owners are doing great things to that end. So thank you, guys, for your leadership in this process. And before I ask if you have any questions for me, I do have one for you. Is it the will of the council to continue these updates every six months? Or, excuse me, six weeks? Thank you.
I believe it is, and let's, yes. Thank you. Good report. Councilman Getz, and then Councilman Durio.
If you go back to the last slide, you said there's one building that we cannot or have not been able to yet identify who the owner is?
Yes, sir.
What is that building?
Give me one second. I have that information. It's next to Richard Engineering, right across from Municipal Court.
Another question, first, thank you for this very good report. As I am digesting what you said, it looks to me like many of the building owners are working with your department, and they represent a number of building, but that there's maybe one building owner that is not working with your department, but that one building owner represents roughly half of the buildings that are at issue. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Councilman Durio.
You said you have one building that you haven't been able to find the owner. How long do you look for the owner? And when you reach the end of that time, what's the next step?
Speak to that process.
Yeah, so we're, right now, we're obviously looking for the owner, trying to go through deed records and whatnot. Once there's, if it comes to a point where we just cannot identify anyone, then obviously we'll work with our legal department to make sure that we move in the correct order. But, you know, we're just going to follow the state statutes on what we're allowed to pursue there.
So if that building needs to be boarded up, is that something that we can do?
It is. That building in particular, the open windows are not accessible. They're on a second or maybe even a third floor. So unlike some of the other ones that we deemed imminent danger because of the break-in and entering, we didn't feel this one was. But it is something that we can do if we feel it's necessary.
When you said you have to, some of them, I guess you said you file charges. What happens when you file charges? I guess they go to municipal court?
That's correct.
And are they issued fines or what? And how much are the fines?
So once we file charges, and would you let me know?
Municipal court is fine only, so there's no retribution there. But in filing charges, they do have an opportunity to bring the building into compliance or make those changes in lieu of being assessed a fine. The window fine, I believe, starts at $500, and it can go up to $2,000 depending on the violation.
And one last question on the Gilbert Building. I mean, you spoke on that, but is that, where are, is that still considered, I guess, dangerous? And is it still a possibility that it needs to be demolished?
The engineer of record is still working on assessing it, and he is currently out of the country and has not responded and given us a definitive answer on that. But that is what they are working to do, is getting us, get us a definitive answer. That report has been delayed. They are still working on their shoring efforts and making sure everything is where they can create an accurate plan, but they have yet to get that to us.
So are actually physically shoring up those walls right now?
So they are providing the scaffolding and shoring just to clear out all of the debris that has, that was damaged in the fire so that they can determine how extensive the damages are. So we still don't have that report from the engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Samuel.
Yes. You stated you have one owner that owns the majority of the property downtown. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And is that owner in the, in the chart as to they've met with you to present plans for the future? Or is that one owner not been participating in the meetings?
That owner in particular, we've had several meetings with, but we have not seen any real plans.
And what is the next step?
Well, each building is being treated separately, and so is there a specific building?
No specific building. But are we seeing progress on any of the buildings?
Of those 11?
Yes.
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Getz.
Can we go back to the slide of those 11, just so that I'll have them in my mind? No. The one that's bleeding everywhere.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Councilman Neal.
Yes, and that's a bit of a, perhaps you could speak to this, but they are keeping up with the taxes, but the owner that is listed is deceased.
So in that particular property, the owner is deceased. There is someone obviously paying the taxes. There's no probate on the estate file to say who the heirs or the owner should be. So there's really, as long as the property is paid, in the name of the deceased.
Demolition Coordinator Silas Clutter, he actually just reported that he was able to make contact with that owner about an hour ago.
All right. The recess helped us get there, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, at this point, we're going to begin with council member comments, and I will begin with Councilman Neal. Councilman Samuel.
Yes, Mayor. I've received numerous calls in the last couple of weeks asking about my plans for the future. And with that, this will be my last term as a ward councilman on Ward 3. I'm not running for reelection. However, I've seen a great deal of progress made over the past couple of years, and I'm somewhat concerned about how that will continue into the future. And because of that, I will be running for city council at large. That's my desire.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Fellshaw.
Condolences to the former Mayor Evelyn Lord family, and also just a thank you to Emily Wheeler and her staff for just a great program with the lighting of the Christmas tree. They always do a phenomenal job, and I heard citizens talking, and it was just a great night and a great event. So thank you, Emily, and your staff.
Thank you, Councilman Fellshaw. Councilman Turner.
Yes, I'd like to shout out Mayberry Movers. This year, we did our 10th Annual Hoos for Toys, where, you know, me as a council member, collaborated with the Beaumont Police Department. We played a community basketball game, and in order to enter, you had to bring a toy. And we had a list of parents who were struggling during Christmas, and they had the opportunity to collect some of those toys to take care of their families. So I partnered with Mayberry Movers and the Beaumont Police Department. So I want to thank you guys for the support. It came out well. We collected well over 150 toys and blessed over 150 families. So I just wanted to shout out everybody who participated in that. Secondly, I'm requesting that we can do some form of a budget workshop on the next meeting. I specifically want to talk about a zero-based budget. I want to talk about our bond rating, and I want to talk about our general fund. I've been getting calls from different people in the community, and instead of talking about it privately, I think it'd be a great opportunity to talk about it publicly and really get into the logistics of where we at on everything. So if someone could give me a second, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Getz.
I also want to shout out to our Beaumont Events Department and Emily Wheeler for an incredible Christmas tree lighting. The drone show was amazing, just amazing. Just, not just the children, but adults were, you know, looking in and wonder at the artistry that was created by these aerial drones. It's just well, well done, and we're going to have a Hanukkah menorah lighting later this month on the 30th and hope to see people attend that also. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Getz. Councilman Durio.
Oh, yes. First, Mr. Manager, we could look into Mr. Jerome talked about the warming stations for this coming winter. Make sure that we got that ready whenever that weather turns cold for the folks that's outside. We could look into that. Also, this past weekend, we had an oratorical contest at my American Legion post. Mr. Carden Bond did, he's a member of the student city council. He done quite well, and he's moving on to the next level. Thank the mayor, Mr. Williams, and Ms. the city attorney, they were judges in the contest, and they've done, they've done a really good job. Also, if I'm not mistaken, Bart, is this your last meeting? Well, Bart, man, congratulations on your new job. I really enjoy working with you. I almost feel like I'm an engineer compared to when I first came on this job. I really, I really learned a whole, whole lot. I really did. And I'm sure you're going to do a great job over there in Bridge City. Also, congratulations to Molly. I understand she's going to be your interim replacement. And one other thing, I'm proud, I got a new addition to the Durio family. I just had Sunday, this past Sunday, a brand-new grand, baby granddaughter, Naila Amy Rose Durio. And I just got a picture. She's going home from the hospital today.
Outstanding. Congratulations. Mr. Bart Koviac, and congratulations to you on your new opportunity.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank y'all and the city of Beaumont in general, the citizens, council, most especially all the employees that I've had the benefit of working with over the years. It's been a great group of people and a very fantastic group that I'm working with now. So y'all are in good hands as far as the people within Public Works. But I have grown personally and professionally over the years and appreciate my time here at the city of Beaumont. So it's somewhat bittersweet as I head on to Bridge City, but thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I just want to first give condolences to Mayor Lord and her family. Bart, I am going to miss you. I'm almost in tears, but I'm not going to cry. I want to congratulate Molly on being appointed as the interim Public Works Director as well. And congratulations, Councilmember Durio, on your baby girl.
Mr. City Manager.
I'd also like to acknowledge Ms. Cheryl Ray, who, our next meeting, she won't be here, so I would like to thank Cheryl for her service and working here at the city of Beaumont. I appreciate it. And again, I'd like to acknowledge Bart, too. I didn't have the pleasure of working with Bart long, but he's the ultimate professional, does an outstanding job, and he'll do great as our city manager. Having been president of Texas City Management Association, we're always looking for good city managers. But Bart, be careful what you ask for, trust me. What you're doing now is a whole lot different than what you will be doing. But we're very, very proud of you. Just keep, keep on, and you're going to bigger things even than Bridge City. Congratulations.
All right, and certainly I want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, because we will, our next meeting will be January 7th. Certainly extend our condolences to Mayor Lord's family, and that was beautiful service today, and she had prepared everything about it. So she, so that was very appropriate for those that knew her. Certainly, thank you, Bart, for your service. Congratulations to Councilman Durio. Christmas lighting with the drones and fireworks was epic, and it was a great, it was a great night for the city of Beaumont and for all that were there. And with that, we're going to recess into executive session. Thank you.